You new here?
Yep.
My allegiance is to the line of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keep sparking that flame?
Yeah, I know, that's right.
I'm up there now.
What now?
Good spot for it.
Action on the minutes.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor, posed. Number three, adjustments to the agenda.
I have nothing.
Okay. Four public comments, please state your name and the town that you are from for the record, please. No comments, okay. Item five, business items, 5.1 Welchville Dam, Adam?
All right, so we're talking about the Welchville Dam tonight. Where we're at is, we've got Mr. Cludier from VHB Engineering here. The original, the original contract we signed with VHB brought us up to the point of the, going through the DEP permit and so forth, but not to construct the bid documents and do the archaeological survey and so forth. And we need to go through that archaeological survey step and then the preparation of the bid documents and so forth to continue to move on with this project. So, the reason that we're here tonight talking about this is I'm asking the board for permission or authorization to sign the amendment to the original contract to engage VHB in these services. Mr. Cludier is here tonight to answer questions about the contract amendment, if the board has any of them, the costs and so forth. But that's the gist of what we're trying to do tonight.
Any questions for many of the board members? So the, I guess I'll ask first, so I'm looking at 5.1, page one, and it looks like the amended amount is forty-two, seven, ten?
Yep. It'd be an addition, an additional forty-two, seven, ten, and that includes labor and expenses.
For the next step?
Correct. And he's outlined that in the scope of services as well. You broke it down into three tasks?
Yes, the, yeah, the three tasks are the additional archaeological testing, the preparation of the actual bid documents, contract documents, putting things out to advertise the bid, assisting the town to select a contractor, and then construction phase services to have an engineer onsite directing the contractor and verifying work.
So, that leads me to want to know the following steps. If we decide we're gonna go keep, continue forward, we're gonna do this, what's left? And an estimated cost of what's left?
Well, this brings us, as far as engineering, all the way to the end, does it not? Because if, if the board decides to award this project, once the bids have gone out, VHB will oversee, much like with a road project that Rob proved from Pine Tree, they'll oversee it to ensure that it's done to specs and so forth, and oversee it to the end, so.
So this gets us to a fully drawn-out engineered project, and then it's bids and somebody to do the work.
And then, then overseeing the work at the border.
Estimated cost?
Of construction for the grade controls?
So what, after we spend this money, if we spend this money, what's left? How much more, in your opinion, do you think it's gonna be? And I know it's hard to, especially where stuff's going on, spending the last couple of years, but...
I, I can say that when we did put together design plans, we did prepare a, a construction cost estimate, this would've been back in March 2022, so it's fairly recent. And that put the total at just under $100,000, both to construct the grade control project, and that includes the access road to get out there, just to provide a contractor with a, with a way to, to get to that point.
So, could we get a right-of-way across that land to get in there?
That was a part of the work that we've done up to this point, all essentially the feasibility study, make sure this could be done, working with the landowner who does own the lands, and attaining a written authorization easement.
But it appears he's interested in letting you do it?
Yeah, that, that was a necessary step of the DEP permit, was to demonstrate that the property owner provided access.
And we've got that in hand, yes.
So what does this archaeological study, architectural study that you have left to do, what does that consider?
The archaeological study, it was, that came about as part of the interview process is that the main historical preservation office reviews the project, compares its, against their records, identifies there's potential, that there had been pre-contact of, so essentially Native American settlements in the area. And the next step, in order to construct, essentially run heavy equipment through the area, one of their conditions, and this is a requirement of the main DEP permit, is that the archaeological team go back out there, along the route, and map out precisely where there are any items that need to be protected or removed.
Because early on in the last step, if I may, there was, evidence was found that apparently there was some sort of either migration or community or something in the area, and that's what prompted this.
Really?
Yep.
Has anybody considered on the other side, coming in from, from Kugel's property? Because there's a road right down to the inlets.
Bet you're running into more problem on that side.
Why?
This side, you can come right into them, you can get, I mean, if they build a road out in there, you can get it, but you gotta come across the backwater if you go the other.
No.
You gotta...
He took me down the other day before Thanksgiving, roll right down through.
Has he made a new road since last time out, isn't it?
Well, the road that goes down to his site that he has a septic system on that, by the town wells, down the net.
Right. Still think you're behind his route, you better route.
Was, was this down to the confluence where the outlet channel enters the Landiscoggin River?
It's on the other side.
Yeah, he's on the other side, where you got the two inlets coming in, and then the outlet that goes to the Landiscoggin. He was showing me an area in there that, it's like here from, here to that wall wide, and that, that could be where it put a dam in.
That, that location is downstream of the, I don't think, of the location that we identified for the grade controls. So there, there is not a direct road to that point. And it's part, again, part of the feasibility study that, that we did, the design we put together, looked at access from both sides, north and south, and found that the access from the south side is a equal, if not shorter, distance of new roadway, but more importantly, is up on high ground, so you don't get into an issue of...
But you come right over where that old camp is, right? You come down that road, it, it goes into that old camp.
Yeah, it takes, it takes advantage of the existing logging road and skidder trails.
So my question is on the grant funding. Will the grant funding cover the cost going forward from this?
My understanding is that the grant funding, yes, it could cover the, it's the installation of the grade controls and the removal of the old dam. And as we were just, just to clarify earlier, you know, there is still, you know, everything is talked about doing what was a three-year study on water levels, and it's before those decisions were made on, on the, on the dam removal or the viability of these grade controls and so forth, so.
Okay.
But we still don't have a definitive answer on if those grant funds have been...
Released.
Correct.
But we would pay for them once it's released.
Correct.
The money just changes accounts.
Yeah.
What does the board want to do with this? Do you have any more questions? Do you want to proceed with this?
I'd like to see it, I'd like to see this project wrapped up. We've been working on this for quite a while, and I think it's time to just be done with it and move on. Next project.
Thank you.
I agree. The only, the only other question I had was the timeline. If, going forward, what are we looking at potentially when this project can, they move the first stone and put the last one in place?
So this would be the timeline after completion of the grade controls are installed?
Well, on page four, you, you hit on a schedule, but, but it talks about December and so forth, but remember we talked about having to push that out because of, I think that's what it's to be for, but, so is this the, the schedule to complete this project, installing the grade controls, or this, or the schedule, what would happen after the grade controls are installed?
I'd like more when the grade controls have been installed.
I mean, yeah, I thought that's what we're talking, so this is to get ready for the grade controls, and then the next step is putting grade controls in, and I don't know what you're talking about after that, other than just seeing how they work and...
Right. Yeah, I think he's just looking for clarification on starting the archaeological, archaeological testing, you know, what you, we had said October to December, but we're in December, so that's gonna get shoved out a few months, just kind of, and then when will bids be prepared and go out, that kind of stuff?
Yes, I, I can certainly speak to that, and there, there was a schedule in the contract amendment, of course, that assumed, starting back in October, so. Very roughly, everything is, is pushed off by three months. That said, the archaeological testing, snow is starting to fall, ground is starting to freeze, that makes it difficult to excavate in the ground and conduct archaeological digs. So that would be a question of if the, if the archaeological subconsultant TRC could get out, if weather would permit in their schedule. The other aspects, the finalizing the bid documents could start right away, putting the, putting out to bid, soliciting bids from, from contractors and then selecting them, all those items, I would say, essentially take what it says in the initial schedule, which I believe was in January, February, going out to bids, now we'd be looking more at a March, April. Construction, from what I can see, would still be feasible to become, done at the same time, that late summer, early fall time of year, which is typically the driest time of the season, the best time to do work in the water. So the, the hope is that barring any unforeseen delays with archaeological testing or any issues going out to bid, knowing what the construction industry has been like lately, that the, this would be done within fall of next year, 2023.
Now, when this goes in, what happens with DEPs? Do EPs say if this works, the dam comes out, the Welchville Dam?
The, the way the permit is set up is that the grade controls will go in, there is a monitoring period of three years to verify that they are working as intended, that they are maintaining water levels in the ponds, essentially replicating the effect that the dam has, and then following that period, the dam would need to be removed.
Right?
I, I agree with Scott, we've kicked this round a long enough. It is, I mean, you did, you got ahold of somebody who said that where they had done it before wasn't working?
Yep, I reached out to a handful of different people and got, you know, reviews back, positive reviews, but I did just get one I was finally able to talk to yesterday, and she took the time, she was from like their version of the TLEA, and she had taken the time to send pictures and everything, she said the grade controls are working great, controlling water flow, she spoke a lot to the fish passage portion, she was very passionate about that, but they've had, they're very happy, so. And they had to do tool to them, that they were overseeing, so it was both of them that they were happy with, so. One was very, I think, similar four different levels, the other one was five, I don't know if I used the right word, levels.
Yeah, the number of steps, yes.
Yeah, so they were very happy.
And when this is all done, if we still wanna get out there and carry a canoe around it, will be able to get out there and put the canoe back in river on the other side?
Yes, part of the design did include a, a portage path for canoes or kayaks, I believe it was roughly fifty feet long.
True. Let's give it a whirl.
So, do you have a motion to go forward with the amendment and continue the project?
I'll make the motion to go forward within hours.
Do you need the total?
Uh, with the forty-two, seven, ten?
Seven, ten, yeah.
Spread the discussion, all those in favor, posed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Five point two, abatement supplemental for account twelve thirty-nine, and seventy-nine Laurel Lane for a hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor, posed, thank you. Five point three, abatement for account twenty-one ninety-four, one twenty-eight Hoben Pond Lane for nine hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor, posed, thank you. Item number six, department head report, pre-court, please department update with Chief Jack.
Like before, I got, I brought you guys a bunch of numbers to show you where we're at this year, so I made a few comparisons to last year. As of five thirty, when I checked, we're at four thousand one hundred and sixty-five calls for service, a little bit ahead of last year for right now. This year for 2022, we have issued a hundred and fifty-three criminal summonses, and you compare that to last year, in 2021, we issued a hundred and twenty-three, so you can see the difference there. We made a hundred and sixty-three physical arrests, and last year, this time, we made seventy, so that's how much has gone up. As I stated before, some of these cases take extreme amounts of time to investigate, we don't have a dedicated investigator right now, so all of the major cases, when I say major, I mean felony cases, either Sergeant Beeson or I are conducting the majority of those cases, and the guys are doing, following up with their criminal cases that they can. Some of them take, take them out of town, we just had one, two weeks ago, that took us to Portland, and we had a huge drug seizure out of that happen. So it's, it's stretching us a little thin as far as the caseload that we're working on. We've also been working in the past real closely with some state police detectives in the area to help us with the out-of-town things, we've also been doing search warrants and things like that with them. That's going to be ending in January though, because the state police is restructuring, and those detectives are gonna be put back into the road because they have the shortest of troopers. So that's gonna make it even more challenging for us with some of the investigations. To go down through a few of the numbers, so far, we've had eighteen domestics, eleven simple assaults, thirty-two drug cases this year, we've had two saves in the past two days with Narcan Rescue, did one of the saves, and one of our officers did another one this morning about one-thirty, doing over those. We've had fifteen OUAs thus far, thirty-nine thefts, when I say thirty-nine thefts, break it down a little bit, we've had, the twenty shoplifting is separate from the thefts, so those are separate issues. Traffic citations, we've issued three hundred and twelve this year, a hundred and seventy-five traffic warnings, that's becoming more of a challenge for us right now, trying to dedicate time to run traffic, and we all know ski traffic is coming soon, and that picks up for the corridor group twenty-six, which is extremely busy for us. We've covered a hundred, I'm sorry, fifty-five intoxication calls, we've covered two hundred and nineteen calls at the casino. With that being said, with the new management that's up there, I say new management, I think he's been in a little over a year now, the relationship has been fantastic working with him, a lot better than it had been prior to. So I actually enjoy working with him a lot more than we had before, they're welcoming us a little bit more, they help us out when we need it. Now, with that being said, also with the casino, two hundred and nineteen calls at Walmart alone, we've had two hundred and ten so far, so. And I threw Hanafit in there, we've had forty-six calls there, but you can see that Hanafit is keeping us pretty busy, and if you go there very often, I'm sure you see the cruisers there, because we're there almost every day. Refusing to submit to arrest, we've had eighteen of those this year, and I bring that up because so far this year, we've had eight of our officers have been assaulted, three since September. Luckily, we haven't had any major issues. One of the assaults recently happened at the casino, and the subject that was involved in that was a known gang member out of New York, so we're, we're dealing with some very serious things. People pick on Lewiston, but we're getting, we're getting the same type of calls that they're getting down there, and, and, and it's getting more frequent for us. And we also had a firefighter that was assaulted early in the fall that we dealt with. That's pretty much what I ran for numbers, other than that, we're trying to get ready for the year end, training push, we have to get a bunch of things done for the academy, that's all due for January, the guys are trying to work on that best they can, and the two new cars right now are going great, performing just the way we had hoped they would, so. We had one issue with a shifter issue, but it was covered by warranty, so, and they took right care of it within a day for us, so besties have been great to deal with.
Questions?
Chief, um, mutually between Nellin, Paris, and is it quite a bit, or?
Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah, yeah, we're going to them a lot, yeah. They're coming to help us quite a bit also. My opinion is we're at the point where night, nighttime, we need two guys on every night because of that, and plus, we're going to Otis Field quite a bit to help county out, because they don't have a deputy over that way quite often. Daytime isn't so bad if we have the duty unit, because usually, there's a sergeant and myself is on, and, and I'm covering calls too, along with the guys, so.
Are all your officers trained to use Narcan?
Yes, we are, yep. And actually, I just issued out our last dosages tonight, I've got a call, the Emmys are, I got a call to order some more.
The only other question I had was with the academy, are all your officers, do you have any officers that have to go to the academy?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Still short?
Once the promotion is done, I'll be short one.
You're short, detective position's open?
Patrol.
A patrol position?
It will be, I don't have a full-time detective. My captain, or lieutenant, whatever it will be, he will, he will oversee the investigations, but he also has other responsibilities to manage.
And it's the position that's open right now, right?
It will be patrol, yes, my old captain position will be...
The only position that's currently open?
Right, yes. Then once that's filled, I'll have a patrol position.
You're, I mean, I, I think I know the answer probably, because I see them more often, but are we still doing, the sergeants are overlapping the, the day and the night shift?
Uh, two to two, they come out two in the afternoon and work till two in the morning.
And that's the time you got two off, you have an officer and a sergeant?
Sergeant Beeson right now is kind of doing what I was doing before, so he's working more the day thing, and then, um...
But once that position's filled?
It will be two to two.
That sergeant will be?
Yes.
And with that, you still think you're looking at me anymore at some point?
At some point, we're going to. If these, if these numbers continue, we're gonna have to, to keep up with the growth of the town.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item, item seven, town manager's report.
All right, so first, I just wanted to mention, at the last meeting, we talked about EMS rescue fees and, you know, waivers and our forgiveness for those that have difficulty paying, I've been working with the fire chief on that, and should have something to present to the board at the next meeting, a little bit of, you know, borrow up here and there kind of, you know, with that, and I think we've got, got something that you'll, you'll like, the billing, billing agency said that they can, before it goes to collections, they can then send that letter in response to kind of intervene in the process and so forth, so I'll have that for you next time. I also wanted to say, great job to the recreation department for the Christmas celebration that happened here on Sunday, November twenty-seventh, the tree lighting and the Santa Claus event and so forth, it seemed like it was a really big hit, got a lot of really positive feedback, so I was pretty excited about that. Also wanted to take just a quick second to hit on the holiday schedule for December, Wednesday, December twenty-first, looking at closing the office at two PM for the, every year we've been doing, or the last couple of years we've been doing, the employee Christmas party, so two to four that day, and then Friday, December twenty-third, the office will be closed for Christmas Eve, that's because Christmas Eve is actually on Saturday, and we observe it the day before, and then Monday, December twenty-sixth, the office will be closed for Christmas, because we, Christmas is on Sunday, and we close the following Monday. And then the final one is Monday, January second, the town office will be closed for New Year's, again, that's, New Year's is on Sunday, so it's observed on Monday. So I just wanted to make sure that I reminded the public and the board of that, so that's what I have.
Any questions?
How does that affect the transfer station hours, because that's the biggest question that I always get? When are they gonna be open and closed, and can we make sure we put that up?
To make sure that's all, yeah, because they're usually, so they're usually closed on, they're usually there on Sunday and closed on Monday, if I remember correctly. So that would make it so that they would be closed on that, they would be closed on the holiday on the Sunday, so then they wouldn't be back again until Tuesday.
And Saturday?
For that week, it would be Saturday as well, because it's Christmas Eve and Christmas, yep.
Saturday, Sunday.
So they'd be closed that Friday before, so?
Recently, what we've been doing is we've been having, they've been working, and they haven't been closing the day before, they've just been working. So, starting next year, one of the things that I've been looking at is, when you look at the schedules, for whatever reason, the transfer station, for instance, if the holiday falls on a Sunday, they would, or excuse me, if the holiday was on a Monday, a day, a day that they were supposed to be working, they would end up getting extra hours that week, because we keep them open all the way through. So, starting the first of the year, we gotta put them back in line with the rest of the, you know, the rest of the town departments as far as, you know, what, they get days off for the holidays too, so. I think it makes more sense, we've got a lot of Monday holidays in 2023, and I'm gonna give you guys that schedule here shortly, so if the holiday falls on a Monday, we would have them closed on the following Tuesday, so that's equal eight hours, you know, eight hours for eight hours. But Sunday seems like that would be a hard one to take away, because Sunday is the day that I think most people probably use that service on the weekends, so. But anyways, it's gonna be a long way to answer, I'm sorry.
So Friday, open or no?
Friday, they should be, they'll be open, yeah.
So we'll just close the Saturday and Sunday?
Correct.
Well, they normally close Monday.
That's the only thing that's gonna be open, all the rest of the employees?
Everything else we close, yeah.
I thought we, I thought when we discussed this, that they were, they were getting paid for Monday, and they'd be open Tuesday, or did I hear that wrong?
Well, that's not worth doing, huh?
Well, I thought we, I thought we went through this, we're on the personnel policy, we guessed their personnel policy, they would get paid, holiday pay for the holiday, and they'd be open on their normal schedule.
So the challenge with that is, is that Sunday's four hours, so if they're gonna get paid for a holiday, when the rest of the town gets eight hours holiday pay, you end up giving them four extra hours. So I'll bring you guys a schedule so you can see, because I believe you guys, prior to my arrival about two years ago, I had this discussion with the transfer station.
I thought we agreed that they would, look at it, but I thought they, we agreed that they were gonna get eight hours, just like the rest of the town employees.
Right, but if you give them eight hours, then you gotta cut four hours off somewhere else. Why don't I bring you what I got, and we can talk about it more, unless you wanna talk about it more now, I can, but...
No, we'll do that, I just, but we settled this one already, but, all right.
Number eight, selectmen items.
So I don't know if you feel like taking that one, Dana, you had mentioned about town office, an open house?
Yeah, somebody had asked me, and I thought we had talked about doing, obviously, when we, when you're in the move and you did the soft open, if you were gonna do any grand opening of the building, realizing that it's not completely done to where we want it yet, but, I don't know if you let it go that some thought, or had given it some thought. And then the, the plaques, the ones similar to the other town buildings, there's one on the fire station, obviously, the plaque on the big stone at the transfer station, just to remember the time, you know, twenty years from now, when people would come into this nice building, so.
He just wants his name on something.
I got a spray paint canvas. I got a spray paint tan, I can put it on something. So I mean, that's what pretty much every town, city does, so.
So I don't know what the feeling of the board is on doing something, maybe, you know, for the new, you know, doing something for the new year, doing some sort of a grand opening type of thing, or waiting until this, and one of the thoughts I had was when this whole end is all opened up, doing like a, like a two-hour meet and greet one night as a grand opening where people can come and maybe we can put out some refreshments or something, you know?
I'm good with that too, I just.
But I feel like that's probably going to be closer to like March because of the contractor's availability to get this done. So whatever the board would like to do, I'm happy to facilitate.
Wait until you get the thing open, where you're going to have it.
That's what I'd like to do too, that makes sense. That way it'll all be done and then we can have the opening and everybody can see what they're going to come up.
I get a can spray paint, put the name and name on it on the front of the wall.
Let's just do it on the driveway, just right. It'll stay there for a while.
We could do portraits too if you have.
You would do something really different.
What's that?
I'm thinking you were thinking actually something really different.
Do we have any other second comments, questions?
Tomorrow, are they going to be out filling potholes again? I had two people complaining. I don't know why they come that way, but coming from the police station out on the number six road, as you come out there, there's a big pothole they just fall into. That's the.
Is that the person that came in today?
No, that was a different one, that was on Skid Row, but to the.
You don't have to.
That one, I mean, Jim, he stated that was a state.
Right off the edge of the.
He sent a notice to state.
You know, as you come out to number six road from the police station. It's a great big pothole right there, everybody goes into it.
It's right on the corner.
They cut two holes on the corner.
And which one is that, Wendy?
What he called, he was talking about right across from.
Well, it is.
The extension of the number six road?
Yeah, it's number six extension.
Well, it's certainly.
So, Colleen, yeah, so Wendy had some info on that. Apparently Jim looked at the hole you're talking about and it actually falls into the state's responsibility. So he's reached out to the OT.
Is this the same one that?
Yeah, it's the same.
Different?
No.
Just talked about it on election day, if you go out where number six road extension comes out 26 and where the old number six road meet, and that end is.
Hole, that end of the.
There's a big hole.
Yeah, that.
And there's holes at the other end too.
I thought he was going to fill. I'll make sure more or less are going to the same.
That would be the one that the state is responsible for, but that one would be responsible.
Right, we would be, yeah.
So it's a different hole.
Couple of holes in February, it'd be it. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Get that.
Number nine, 9121, 22, 33, and 24.
Are we going to sign the abatements?
Uh, yeah. Why don't we send those around, what time, right, Wendy?
That's right, right on that.
Thank you, Colleen. I'm good. Thank you so much, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night. He did say there's a whole nicer company in here than the old place.
I didn't figure his health business, definitely.
Pretty penicillin.
There are three, I think, four.
You did correct here.
Have a good night.
Good night.
I even get an honorable mention in that little report there.
Would you have helped with that large sculpture? I'm taking out the town crew out there with buckets.
Do we have a motion on warrants?
Megan Martin, Sam, 41, 42, 43, 44.
All those in favor? Post? Thank you. Number 10, executive session. To enter into an executive session to discuss personnel matters, we need to do M R S A, Title 1, 2, 13, Section 405, 6A. All those in favor? Thank you.